All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. I want to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled council meeting, governing body of Spring Hill, Kansas on Thursday, April 24th, 2025. You guys could stand with me. We have Pastor Zach Terrell here from Become Church. They meet right here in City Hall Sunday morning at 10:30. So, thank you for being here.
Father, thank you for Spring Hill, Kansas.
That we live in and the many opportunities and possibilities that it represents. I thank you for this governing body and the many civil servants who work here and throughout the city every day to provide a community that's safe and that has those opportunities. And, but I thank you for the growth and the many different things on the docket today about construction and building and just the future and how we look to it. And I pray that you would give us wisdom so that we might handle those opportunities and face the challenges that come with it in a good way. And as we are transformed by the oncoming of time and the opportunities that were presented with, we pray that you would help us to become the community that you want us to be, one that is positioned for your blessing and favor. God, I pray for open doors and good opportunities here and all of the very best things right here in Spring Hill as it is in heaven, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, and I stand in the mission of God, and in his full glory, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you please take the roll.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Peel.
Here.
Mr. Thrawn.
Here.
Mrs. Feback.
Here.
Mr. Grant.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum presence.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. We don't have any requested changes or additions at this time. Any questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to citizen participation. This is time when the public can come in and speak about anything they would like to talk about. We did not have anyone sign up on the list, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to, if you could step up and state your name and address, now would be your time. If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation at this time and move on to consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but if there's any questions or comments on that, now would be the time. Not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
A second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal council action. The first item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number 2025 dash zero four and ordinance amending ordinance number 2023 dash 10 of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas and levying and assessing the final costs of the improvements on certain lots, pieces and parcels of land in the city and specifically Webster Road Special Benefit District. And if it's done, you have the floor.
It's a good night tonight when we take a couple of years worth of work and finalize things and put it all together. And our project at Wiswell Farms and North Webster Street, one of the early rural housing incentive districts in the metro area is all coming to formal closure and moving forward into maintenance. Before I get going very far, I wanted to introduce you to Rick McConnell away from the back row. He's a good churchgoer back there. He is our new Tyler Ellsworth. He works for Kutek Rock and he'll be filling those shoes for us and looking forward to work with Rick. He comes with a lot of experience and we look forward to putting that to work here. He's also with Emma Kate, who is the person who does all the work. I'll be honest, that's how this goes. She puts everything together and is working in government and bonding legal work. And she's another attorney working with us as well. But instead of talented people up here, I'm going to tell you about these two action items we have going. When we set up working on North Webster Street, we got a $2.7 million base grant and we built Webster from 199th up to 191st. We've all been on it. We've all seen it. Beautiful addition, accessing the Wiswell Farms properties and the new housing that is there. The developer has jumped in and built quite a few new houses in the area utilizing the rural housing incentive district to be able to keep those homes attainable. And so they're at a price point where a lot of families can afford first homes and things like that. So that has come to fruition. So tonight, we're going to consider two things. First, an ordinance amending 2023 10, which is a levying and assessing the final cost of improving the improvements on certain parcels of land in the Webster Road Special Benefit Districts. The net amount that we are assessing is three million, three million, one hundred thousand, I believe. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry, three million, five hundred and fifty thousand is the amount that we will bond also tonight and then assess to these properties. I believe you have received the breakout by each parcel. The commercial ones, I believe, are receiving an amount of about $6,584 and then the residential lots, 4,336. And just as a reminder how this will work, the commercial property is not a part of the RIT. And so those properties will have the $6,584 assessment going forward. That we don't have any plan at this time to change that. The housing ones, the unbuilt lots, the owner of those lots will pay this assessment until they build houses. When they build houses on it, the RIT will then kick in and they will stop paying the assessment because the property taxes will go to pay the debt on the street. So this is a, I'll say, temporary plan on the residential lots, hoping that they all get built in the next few couple of years. And then that will stop the assessments for the owner when they change hands. Can I answer any questions about the work that we're doing here and the plan that we made two years ago, I think?
Yeah.
And now it's all down to brass tacks.
I think it's exciting for us, especially those, well, for all of us, especially those of us that have been here for a couple of years and saw this from the very beginning and kinda was a dream at that time almost of what we could see and now seeing, you know, 100 houses built and a nice road, sidewalks on both sides and streetlights and just kinda seeing that whole area develop out. I think it's been a pleasant surprise on how nice it could be and they're still going. So, yeah.
It was fun when the Department of Commerce came through and did one of their regular reviews. I took the young guy out there and I said, well, here it is. And he was like, wait a minute, you have houses in the neighborhood and everything. And I said, yeah, this, this project's done. And at work, he said, so many things don't happen like that where you build a street and wait for housing. So you have this beautiful street to nowhere kind of a thing. He said, you guys are the opposite of that. And I, I do volunteer us to be the poster child for RIT and base grants and all those kinds of things if he needs us. So it has worked well.
We've gotten some props from some of the Johnson County government and some of the other surrounding governments because we were, you know, the first in the area to do it. And so now a lot of cities around us are starting to do them. And so they've kind of looked to us, you know, to what, what worked, what didn't work and things like that. And so
Right.
We've gotten a lot of accolades from that. So it's awesome that it, that it's worked well and I think even better than I expected.
Right. It's been a, it is a complex transaction, a lot of different pieces to it. And between Kutek Rock and Baker Chili, they've been our advisors through this whole thing. It's, it's good to have people with that kind of experience on our team.
Well, for us as a city, we were kind of taking a chance, trying something, something new and sticking our neck out there a little bit. And this time it didn't, didn't bite us in the butt. So
That's right.
Happy for that.
I also needed to point out to you in the final assessments, in the documents, if you vote in favor of this tonight, that the mayor will sign, the last two property IDs have a correction in them. And so you will sign corrected documents tonight.
Any other questions or comments on that?
How many of your houses are still yet to be built or sold out there? When it's complete?
We're probably 205 or so left to go, maybe 240. I just want to make sure though, that some of those areas that are zone commercial, they're still covered underneath a RIT, not tax based, but if residential properties get built on there, because we are working with one, right? I don't want you to think, well, that was, it's along the highway. So
So we still could have more that's included?
That's great.
There's residential.
If residential is built there.
Does it have to be, can it be like apartments or does it have to be single family or?
Residential.
Any residential.
Right.
Interesting. So those 200 lots or so, that's going to be paid for, starting, once this goes into effect by the developer or builders?
The owner of the property.
Okay. All right. Perfect. So there's, there's no waiting period. We don't have to wait to get those.
You'll, if you approve them tonight, we'll assess them in August. The bill will go out in November. We'll see that money in 2026.
Oh, great. Okay, cool. And this is not any, just for clarity, this isn't hot, any new debt or anything, like we're not loaning out a bunch of money or anything like that?
This is, we took out temporary notes to construct. Now we're bonding.
Saying in, bonding it.
And that this is paid by, it is not going to be paid by property tax. It's going to be paid by assessments or eventually by the RIT, which we property tax, but that will not impact the general fund or the mill levy or anything like that.
Or any other taxpayers.
And it also, or any other taxpayer. It also, they, it does not count against the debt ceiling of the city. So it does not have a negative impact on our financial worthiness or anything like that because it is paid by special assessments. Please, please.
Also, this has a expiration date. It started out in 19 and a quarter years or something. So my guess is it ended about 17, 16 and a half.
Well, that was my question too. So if there's no, no additional residential added to this, there's about 17 years left. If you, if we're able to add more residential, could it cut it down quite a bit or is it a time or is it, it's a dollar amount?
Yeah, it's a dollar amount. So once it's paid, so let's say it's paid in 10 years, it stops.
Yeah.
Right.
Or it's a maximum amount in this.
All right, perfect.
So at, at the rate they're moving, I would expect that they would be done early.
Yeah.
Let's hope.
Evaluations are here. I mean, I
Thank you, Pat.
I think we should brag about the Wiswell project a little bit. It's done a lot of the things that I was hopeful that it would do in providing more affordable housing, single families. I think the Wiswell homes are some of the cheapest single family new builds in Johnson County right now that are available. It's significantly lower than what our city limits home price average is. And like, that was the, that was the big goal for me is we needed single family homes that were more affordable. And that's what we got. And I was scared that we wouldn't. That was the risk you were talking about.
Yeah.
But this is, and the speed and timeline, which would, they have developed has been really fast too. So
Well, and it was a challenge back when we passed it and approved it. It was a huge challenge. Like we had to jump a lot of roadblocks at the time and it, it was not easy getting it passed.
Well, that grant put a lot of timelines on it that, you know, that's a nice thing too, is a lot of it's paid for by a grant, which was great.
2.7 million.
Yeah. I, I think it's been very, so
It's also been a good program. I feel, my personal opinion is it gives incentive to the builder to get the job done because they'll continue to pay those assessments on vacant lots.
Yeah, that's
Until they get their houses built and sold to people. So to me, it's win-win.
Yeah, it benefits everybody and we're not stuck in the situation like we are, not throwing any other developers under the bus, but where a developer will approve, you know, plotted land and then it, it'll set for
They can set.
Five or six years.
So it's, it's a good partnership for sure.
No, yeah, I was a little apprehensive back when we did it, but I think it's turned out great. I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Good.
I think it's gonna be a nice commercial development area too. And it's nice to start having more connections outside of the highway to be able to get to the stoplights that are currently there. So that's a nice thing too.
Yeah, it's really nice to not have to jump on the highway to get to all those businesses over there or to get to the Dan, the Dan Studio or the hardware store or anything else over there without having to go on the highway is really nice.
Exactly. Good.
Any other questions or comments?
I want to turn around really quick. Does anyone have something else to add that we haven't talked about? Okay, good. They've taught me well.
If there are no more questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 2025 dash zero four and ordinance amending ordinance number 2023 dash 10 of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas and levying and assessing the final cost of the improvements on certain lots, pieces and parcels of land in the city, Webster Road Special Benefit District.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Peel.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Thrawn.
Yes.
Mrs. Feback.
Yes.
Mayor Burkey.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025 dash zero four passes six zero zero.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to consider approval of resolution number 2025 dash R dash 10, a resolution authorizing the public sale of certain general obligation bonds and temporary notes of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas. And Mrs. Dunn, carry on.
Here we go. So this is part B of the previous step, which is we need to issue final general obligation bonds to pay off the temporary notes for the construction of North Webster Street. And I won't repeat everything else, but the net cost of that project after the grant and everything was 3,550,000. And this resolution will authorize us to pay off the old notes and to issue the bonds for the debt.
Well, we kind of already, already beat the dead horse, but if there are any questions or comments on that one, I entertain them.
And are we combining all of these together on the same?
It's our goal to do that. Yeah. We're keeping them on the same timeline so we can do that to save fees and things like that.
And they'd probably better talk about it, but is there a, is there a dollar amount that's more beneficial or is it just better to have a larger dollar amount on the bond? Like, is it harder to find buyers when it's too large or to, it's going larger, better?
I don't know.
That's actually a really, a really good question. So tonight, what you've got in front of you for the bonds, there's both bonds and notes. Notes are, you, you've already seen the capital projects around 28 million. I'd like to predict how many bids they're going to be and who it's going to be, but the markets jumped all over the place. I mean, really all over the place. As far as supply is concerned, how many of these bonds are going into the market to get sold? There's $19 billion right now trying to get sold. We usually sell, we don't. The market as a whole sells nine billion a week and there's 19 ready to go back into the market. So that tells you the yields come up, but it's going down. So it, it's not acting like it should. The size of the bonds, I don't think it's going to be that material because people know Spring Hill, the ones that, the folks that actually, the institutions that buy from Johnson County, know Johnson County, they know Spring Hill, they know the group and they want to continue to buy. And typically it's about three or four that bid consistently every single time, no matter how big they are. Lawrence, at the beginning of this month, sold 73 million and they had 13 bids.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So they had temporary notes as well. They had 13 bids, they had 18 bid bidders registered 13 bids, which is the best place you can be. Now we'll sell in June. Hopefully things will calm down by then. And folks will get back into the market. We'll be selling bonds between now and June 12th. So we'll be tracking these all the way through. Rhonda will know about what's going on. So far, we haven't seen anything that says it's going to be a nasty interest rate. I think we're still going to be set and, and hopefully it's pretty good.
That's why I wasn't sure if maybe it was worth it breaking it down to smaller amounts, but if it's, if you don't think it's going to be nice.
Usually the, the rule of thumb is the bigger the better.
That's what I was thinking, but I'm like with the kind of being weird right now. I know
Yeah.
Like with us syndication's tough because nobody really wants to get involved in stuff. So I didn't know if bonding was the same way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben. He pointed out an important thing. This is a two-part resolution. One is general obligation bonds, which is about the Wiswell project. And the other is the temp notes for the debt you authorized at the previous meeting. These are all the steps we go through to sell bonds and temp notes in June.
Any other questions or comments? Not, I entertain a, did you have one?
No.
Sorry. If not, I entertain a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number 2025 dash R dash 10, a resolution authorizing the public sale of certain general obligation bonds and temporary notes of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number 2025 dash zero five, amending chapter two, article eight of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to the keeping of chickens within city limits and amending certain provisions regarding the same as set forth in chapter two, article eight of the Spring Hill Municipal Code. And since long, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. The last couple of meetings, we've had discussions by you guys, amending chapter two, article eight, keeping of chickens within the city limits. So tonight before you, we have that ordinance. We have reduced the lot size requirement minimum to, from point two five Um, we have reduced, uh, the lot size requirement minimum to, from point two five to point two zero. And then we have, um, increased, uh, the maximum number of hens allowed. Um, on the lot size, the point two O to just under an eight or half acre, um, to eight. And then we went ahead, um, and increased the rest of those, uh, by two so that now a half acre to almost an acres ten. And then one to three acres is the maximum is twelve. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I think this is one that we were kind of all in agreement with. We all thought it was a good thing. Um, we didn't see any detriment to passing the chickens for, what, three years ago when we passed it? And, uh, it seems like it's only been a positive thing. We have had, that I'm aware of, I haven't had a single complaint of chickens. And so it only makes sense to allow more people to be able to do it.
I thought we all switched to no after they did all the work to update it. No, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with whatever. Didn't matter to me. This one is pretty easy, I think.
Yeah.
Great, no. Anything else?
All right, with that, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five, amending chapter two, article eight of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to keeping chickens within the city limits. And amending certain provisions regarding the same as set forth in chapter two, article eight of the Spring Hill Municipal Code.
A second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Thron?
Yes.
Mrs. Feeback?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five passes six zero zero.
Thought you guys were.
Thank you very.
Thank you.
Big a thobes.
Uh, next item on the agenda is consider approval of grant application for traffic engineering assistance program or the DEEP program for one hundred ninety ninth street and Webster Traffic Study. And Mrs. Abel, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm up here trying to get more money for the city. So, um, the next item before you is a request to authorize staff to move forward with the TEAP Traffic Engineering Assistance Program, uh, process for the area in front of QuickTrip at one hundred ninety ninth and Highway one sixty nine and Webster. It's the best way I could, uh, describe that area. Sure, many of you have driven through that area, especially during school, um, the peak hours, uh, in the morning and in the evening. And honestly, anytime during the day, whenever there's semi trucks that are trying to make a wide turn off of one sixty nine. There's a lot of confusion, issues, traffic flow, um, in that area. And I know I've seen it. Uh, we had a meeting with KDOT a couple of months ago and there was some discussion about that anecdotally. And so we found out that there was this, uh, traffic engineering assistance program through KDOT that allows you, it's mostly meant for smaller cities that don't have a traffic engineer on staff to allow us to work directly with a traffic consultant that, that has been pre-approved through KDOT. Um, to solve issues just like this. This would be at a study level. So, um, the traffic engineer will provide traffic counts, uh, look at the flow of the traffic, um, the turning movements, um, they'll look at the signal timing of the traffic signals in the area. And then they'll come up with recommendations and those recommendations might be changing some of the traffic signal timing, um, pavement marking. It might also include adding a lane or reconfiguring something. So that's why we're going to try to go through this process to see what this, those recommendations look like so that we can move forward and program that into our future capital improvements program. But the first step is to get the study done and KDOT has this program that pays a hundred percent of the study. So there's no, we don't even have to pay for it upfront. It goes all through KDOT. KDOT provides the consultant, they provide, uh, they pay the consultant and then we get a study. So with that, staff recommends approval of a, uh, traffic engineering assistance, uh, application to study the intersection of one hundred ninety ninth and Highway one sixty nine and Webster, however we want to describe that area. I'm available if you have any questions.
I think this is a no-brainer. I think, uh, you know, fulfills our desire to chase after as many grants as we can get. And then also I think any of us that have driven that intersection know that, know that it's, it's a problem. I was worried about that from the get-go that it was going to be a problem, um, with that turn lane on the right, especially with semi trucks and stuff. Um, I think we should have extended that lane all the way around the curve and I think we wouldn't have had that problem, but that was just my thoughts. Any other questions, comments?
No. So if, if it doesn't get awarded to us, we're not obligated to do the study, right?
Nope, there is no obligation.
Alright, perfect.
We still might want to do the study, but there, you know, a financial obligation if we didn't get selected.
Do we know the cost of the study?
It would be about thirty thousand.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve staff submit an application to KDOT and authorizing the mayor to sign a project agreement for the traffic engineering assistance program as outlined by staff.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of grant application for access management construction program, project program for one hundred ninety first and one sixty nine traffic signal. And I think we're all excited about that one. Mrs. Abel, you still have the floor.
Great. Still chasing the money here. So the next item before you is a request to authorize staff to submit a funding application to KDOT uh, for the one hundred ninety first and one sixty nine signal project. Uh, over the past few months, um, staff's been working with KDOT on, um, the, developing that traffic study for, um, one sixty nine and one hundred ninety first streets. I presented that at the last meeting. So if you guys have any other follow-up questions, I'm here, um, to answer those as well. But those planned improvements include, um, turn lane and especially the signal improvements. The traffic study was submitted in early April and we actually did receive comments from KDOT today. So we're um, currently reviewing those and working with the consultant to, um, review those and so that we can go ahead and finalize the preliminary design. So that's all in process, but did want to let you know, we did receive comments today from KDOT. Uh, the, um, city submitted for grant application for congressional, uh, funding and to assist with this project, but unfortunately we did not get granted that funding. So, um, during some of the conversations, we did find out that there was an alternative funding source through KDOT through their, uh, access management construction program. And this is available to, uh, local municipalities to assist with pro, uh, with projects just like this. And this is a reimbursement pro, uh, program. So we would front the costs, then we would get reimbursed. And that reimbursement program is up to two million dollars. Um, and our total cost for this project is, uh, estimated at three point five million dollars. And so that would leave us with a local match of a little over one point five million dollars if we were awarded that full two million. Our twenty twenty five budget included, uh, budget for the full cost of this, um, program because we weren't sure that we were going to get the congressional funding. So good thing we did budget for it because we didn't. Um, but if we did receive the funding for the KDOT grant, then that would allow us to spend up to two million dollars on other capital projects and address some of the other needs that we have.
Yes, sidewalk. Sorry.
Sidewalks and other things, other infrastructure improvements. So, um, with that, staff recommends approval um, to authorize staff to submit for the funding application. And then the other part of this is, um, specifically for this grant, we have to commit to funding the required remaining local match. So I wanted to include that into the motion. I believe that, that writing is in there. So, um, anyway, we want to make sure that that gets, uh, into the record as well. I'm available if you have any questions.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, I just, when is the, when would the money be awarded then? If you're turning in the application now, would it be in twenty five or?
Uh, I would have to find out what the timeline is. Um, I believe that would be a twenty twenty six obligation.
That's what I wondered. Okay.
Yeah, but it's going to take us time to finalize the design, get it out to bid and start construction. And again, it's a reimbursement program.
Right.
So we wouldn't be reimbursed until twenty twenty six at the conclusion of the project anyway.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking.
Um, be, for me, this was, this is probably the thing I've worked the hardest on in the last four years is this traffic signal. So I'm super excited. I mean, went to the state department four years in a row, went all the way to the federal level trying to get funds. Um, so I'm really excited to see this. Five ball finally moving down the court and getting, getting closer to, to, you know, fruition. So super excited about this and yeah, open to any other questions, comments?
Is this a all or nothing two million or can they counter offer it lower?
It could be lower, but.
Okay, so we don't have to like shoot for a number. It's anything two million or under, they'll give us.
Up to two million.
It would be up to two million and our commitment is that we would cover the local map.
Whatever the difference is.
And because we have it fully programmed in our, in our budget, we have the capability to do that.
Okay, great.
So we'll hope for the best, obviously.
Mm-hmm. I just wanted to say thank you for putting the extra work in to find this opportunity to get some extra money in there.
Yeah, I'm digging in the couch cushions every week.
Very, very exciting.
And this is something I've, you know, I think all of us have probably heard about about as much as anything that we've heard about is this intersection. So I think it's something that community really wants and needs and, and honestly, I think it's a lifesaving project. So I think it's, uh, exciting to see it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question, but it's not about the money. It's more about your comments about KDOT.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what's the anticipated timeframe for you to submit those back?
Uh, so I'm going to meet with the consultant tomorrow or Monday to go through the comments just to see what we're seeing and if we agree, disagree and what our next steps are. We would like to set up a meeting with, um, KDOT and their traffic engineers, train systems, um, to go through the comments and see if there's any, um, negotiations, if there's, you know, hey, do, is this an all or nothing, you know, what, what are you seeing? So basically they're asking us to, um, change the configuration a little bit. And we wanted to make sure that all the traffic engineers were in agreement with some of those changes. So again, it's having the meetings of, the meeting of the minds, the traffic engineers, have them agree upon what that future growth information is and what that would do with the length of the turn lanes and the configuration of the turn lanes and stuff. And they're going to, people other than me are going to slice and dice all of the traffic data and try to figure out what the best, um, compromise is for this intersection, knowing that this is, it's an intermediate step. Cause ultimately this is going to be fully built out into, you know, something bigger and better than, um, a traffic signal in the future. So it's trying to figure out, okay, are we okay with this configuration in the interim? Until twenty years from now, whenever this might be a full ramp or some configuration.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm just curious, like, you know, when you talk about having a meeting with them, like how good they are getting back with you and if it's another month or?
No, it wouldn't be. Actually, I, um, totally different subject, but we had, um, one of our, some of our one-on-one meetings for SS four A and today happened to be our meeting with KDOT. So I did have a little bit of time to talk to David Sykes, the, um, project manager for this. Um, and we talked a little bit about it and I've already talked to Lamprey Nielsen about the comments as well. So things are moving. It's, we need to get in everybody's calendars together to get that meeting together so that the traffic engineers can decide on what the right number is for that growth projection. So hopefully we'll get that, um, taken care of here sooner rather than later. And once we all agree upon that, then we can move forward. I'll keep you posted once we, um, decide on all that.
My intent is not questioning you necessarily. I just want to make sure like when people are watching our meetings and stuff, they know like, you know, where we're kind of at in the process and how people aren't just sitting, you know, things are moving.
We're, we're not just sitting here.
I know you're not, but.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things that we have to get every, the right people in the room.
So that can take a while.
It could take a while.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve staff that submit, uh, to submit the funding application to KDOT, authorizing the mayor to sign a funding agreement for the access management construction project program funds and commit funding required for the local match as outlined by staff.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the aggra, agenda is consider approval of two real estate purchase agreements for wastewater treatment plant. And Mrs. Abel, you still have the floor.
Yes, I do.
Like it's about all you tonight.
Not all me. Ron had a couple of things. Almost. Um, the next item before you is request to authorize the mayor to sign not one, but two real estate agreements um, for the property, uh, to, for a property to construct a new wastewater treatment plant. So in order to accommodate the future growth of, um, our fastest growing community in Johnson County, uh, we need, we have enough capacity in our current facility to accommodate our needs today. But knowing what we know about future growth, we wanted to get ahead of the curve and it takes time to build a new wastewater treatment plant. So we want to make sure that when we need it, we will have it. So we need to start planning now. So we've identified a property, um, to the south that will capture a larger watershed so that we can get future growth and expansion like we want, um, for the city. And we hired John Amerine with the land company to help us to, um, do a real estate assessment and, um, negotiate the contract with the property owners. Um, there was some back and forth and we settled on ten thousand five hundred per acre for the three tracks of property that are, three parcels that are associated with this property. Um, the way that the ownerships work, there will need to be two real estate agreements, um, to handle those three parcels. So, um, there is a total acreage of a hundred and sixty four point three eight acres for this entire property. That is an estimate. We would have to, um, get a final survey of the property to get the final acreage. So, uh, the motion, well, the total price would be about one point seven million dollars. Um, but that's wholly based on the, um, survey and what those properties are. It's going to roughly be that one hundred and sixty four point three eight acres plus or minus. So the, the motion would be for the price per acre so that we're not set locked in for that number. Uh, once the property is secured, then we can start moving forward with the design and construction of the wastewater treatment plants. Um, in order for us to accommodate a, an accelerated schedule, there are some, um, uh, alternative project delivery methods that we can use like design build or progressive design build or something like that to help us with the time element. Um, and it might also help us with some of the costs, bringing down some of the costs that you can bring the contractor on board early on and try to value engineer this as you are designing it. Uh, with that, staff recommends the approval of, to authorize the mayor to enter into the two real estate agreements for a price per acre of ten thousand five hundred for a total acreage to be determined by the survey. I'm available if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah.
I feel like that's a fair price per acre, so I'm glad that's what we came to.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I did want to note one thing that the location of this property is in a separate watershed from the Hillsdale Lake. Um, KDHE has had some concerns about the water quality of Hillsdale Lake with some of the can, you know, contamination and such. So by us building this plant in this location, it's in a separate watershed so that we're not draining into the Hillsdale watershed. So, um, hopefully that will help us in the future with future funding and such that we're going to be before you, probably next, the next meeting, I'm going to continue with the grants because I don't stop. So we'll have a couple of grant opportunities available to us, grants and loans and all the things to help us build this because this is going to be a huge effort.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, if there are no more questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to authorize the mayor to enter into two real estate contracts covering the three parcels identified therein at a price of ten thousand five hundred dollars per acre, total acreage to be determined by survey.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a leaseback agreement for one of the parcels acquired for construction of the new wastewater treatment plant. And Mrs. Abel, you have the floor.
I still have the floor. Uh, the next item before you is a request to authorize the mayor to enter into a, a leaseback agreement. So this is associated with the previous item that I just presented. Uh, one of the properties is being used by the owner of the property for agricultural use. And they have expressed an interest in, uh, continuing to use to farm that property. Um, so in order to help with the negotiations, the city agreed to it. Uh, we felt. Uh we felt that um, I believe it's the end or June. June of twenty twenty-six um would be the um date that they would have to vacate the property in order for us to move forward with the construction. Uh the location of this property is not anticipated to be part of the sewer operations where we would locate this, the building and everything like that. So if we were to fast-track the construction and everything like that, this would not um be an imposition for us. They would be able to continue to, and we could work with them. And that's spelled out in the agreement that we would continue to be able to design and construct the wastewater treatment plant while they're leasing uh this property. Um the city is charging a whopping ten dollars for the uh leaseback. And um the updated agreement um does reflect the June of twenty twenty-six date. With that, staff recommends approval to authorize the mayor to enter into a leaseback agreement with um the D Styles family. I'm available if you have any questions.
I guess makes sense, you know, they're already, they're already farming it, might as well have somebody taking care of the land, so we don't have to worry about it. So I don't have any problem with this at all.
This is easy.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna turn any dirt over there anymore. So yeah, this is one simple.
As soon as they asked for that in the negotiations, you know, it made sense. Because again, we're not gonna use the property and, you know, if if it makes, it makes sense for them and it helps them out, then we're willing to to give that to them.
Clarify, this consideration was to get us that good price per acre.
We'll say yes. I'm I'm.
Assist, yeah.
It it probably helped, but I don't know that for sure.
Officially, no. Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh move to authorize the mayor to enter into a leaseback agreement with D Styles Farms, Inc.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you very much. Last item on the agenda is consider approval of a special event permit, First Friday's Spring Hill Recreation Commission. And Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Mayor, I'm gonna sit this one out.
All right, sounds good. We'll come get you when we're done.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have a special application from the Spring Hill Recreation Commission for a First Fridays event. This one actually lists, uh let's see here, one. Four separate dates of the First Fridays, May second, June sixth, August first, and September fifth. So tonight, we are asking that each uh evening be approved. The applicant uh is requesting that the street closures be closed on Main Street from East Nichols to East Hill with barricades placed by five o'clock. And um they also would like police department presence at the event. Uh the risk manager and city engineer reviewed the application and they have no concerns or additional comments. The public works director reviewed the application and he is requesting to monitor the first event and then make any suggestions for amendments to the plan for future events. And then our interim chief police, he reviewed the application and supporting documents and requested large barricades be placed to ensure vehicles cannot drive around them. And then our project coordinator has uh listed the information on temporary signs promoting event that they cannot go on public property, they have to be on private property. Johnson County Fire District Number One, uh they have been talking to the applicant and they have agreed upon a plan and they will need to implement that during the events. Uh staff is request or recommending to approve the special events with the contingency to make any necessary amendments as determined by staff following the first event. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I do. Um so I understand the PD said they do the barriers and then did I also hear it correctly that they want the PD there for monitoring? Do you, um chief, is that, do you have enough staff to do all that? Or did I miss something?
Uh their request was for presence, not necessarily um any enforcement.
Okay.
So essentially, they just want our on-duty officers to be there to say hi to people, the same kind of things we do at normal community events.
Right.
So we do have the staffing for that. We'll we'll just have our on-duty officers nearby.
And I would like to add one thing. Um their original application requested uh alcohol at the event. Right now, um nobody has a uh license to uh sell alcohol. So right now, no alcohol can be um presented at this event. No BYOB, absolutely nothing. It has to be an alcohol-free event until um if an applicant does come in, then they can apply for a special CMB license. But right now, um nobody has the capability of doing that yet. So I did wanna add that.
To clarify, you mean nobody downtown in that area has the capability and not nobody in town, correct?
Yes, mm-hmm, for this event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to. I know there's some plans, I believe one of the businesses has plans to, in the future, so maybe next year or whatever. Might be, might be different, but for now, for sure.
I mean, it could happen within the Friday events, but it would come through a separate um uh permit process, so. But just to let you know that, yeah, this would be approved without any alcohol, even though that is a separate permit. So I just wanted to verify that or clarify that.
I guess it's fun for our community, just another thing, another, another event to, or events to highlight our historic downtown there. So I think it's kinda cool, good, good way to get people down there and then just bring the community together. So I'm I'm excited about it. It kinda is reminiscent for me of the, you know, the street dance we used to have down there before it got too big that we had to move to the ball fields, so. Kinda exciting to have something down there again. Any other comments, questions?
No.
Not an entertaining motion.
Uh move to approve the special event permit for Spring Hill Recreation Commission's First Fridays on Main Street, East Nichols Street to East Hill Street on May second, twenty twenty-five, from five thirty PM to eight thirty PM. And to approve the special event permit for June sixth, twenty twenty-five, August first, twenty twenty-five, and September fifth, twenty twenty-five, from five thirty PM to eight thirty PM. Contingent upon any necessary amendments as determined by city staff following the May second event.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you very much. Someone get Brian, please. And with that, that ends formal council action. At this time, we'll move on to a discussion item and the woman of the hour, uh Mrs. Abel is back up here. Uh discussion item is on safe streets and roads for all or SS4A. Mrs. Abel, you have the floor again.
Well, um I want, I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about during this time. Um I'm gonna start off with giving you guys an update on our SS4A uh comprehensive action uh safety plan, comprehensive safety action plan that we're currently working on. Uh we've been collecting some of the feedback um from the community through our website. We've had the um, the video, the survey, and the interactive map live for a few months now. We've gotten some really good feedback. We've had two advisory committee meetings with our um advisory group. We're getting ready to set up a third advisory committee meeting, which will be our final, and that'll be some time in May. Um we have done several community outreach events. We're gonna be at Daffodil Days this weekend, handing out um some, some prizes for everyone. We'll have some fun, interactive events at at that um event this weekend. And we also have started doing some small um meetings with key stakeholder groups. So today, we met with KDOT, we've met with representatives from um uh county government. We've met with public works agencies. Uh we're getting ready to um meet with some public safety officials. Uh we'll meet with the school district. We've got a couple of other key demographic groups that we're gonna meet with to discuss specifically the issues um that they're doing. So in the future, we're gonna, we've kinda got a draft uh safety plan that we've developed. We're gonna finalize that based on some of these last uh discussions that we'll have. We'll present that to our advisory group um here in a few weeks, and then we will take it to Planning Commission for them to review and recommend approval, and then we'll be back before you to review and approve that plan. So that's kinda the process moving forward. So you guys are gonna start seeing some of the stuff on future agendas as we're moving forward. Our plan is to have this adopted um in June, so that we can start working on some SS4A implementation grants. So continuing on with asking for all that money. Um with some of the data that we've been, all the numbers we've been crunching with the SS4A, we've identified several project areas that we wanted to start looking at potential funding and um projects in those areas. And there are, there's a a grant funding source that's available. Um and that deadline is coming up in mid-June, so we wanted to go ahead and move forward with this. I've asked um Taylor McHenry from HDR, who is helping us out with the SS4A program, to come and talk to you about some of those projects and what our plans are moving forward. I'm gonna be before you next time um for um with a task order to engage HDR to help with this um uh pretty extensive effort to go through the grant process, because it's not just filling out a two-page application. It's putting a lot of data and numbers and maps and for uh almost a study together in order to submit these grant applications. So with that, I'm gonna let Taylor do the rest of the talking and introduce some of these projects for you um so that we can start that discussion.
Do you have a map for you all to look at today? All different projects we're gonna try to fund? Okay, yeah, like Allison mentioned, we pulled together, um, let me see here. There we go. Okay, zoom in for you a little bit here. I'll go through each area. Uh so Alice, like Allison mentioned, um we pulled together some data. We looked at uh historical crash data. We also looked at a few other things as well um to determine uh, you know, not only areas with historical uh crash histories, but also areas that could have potential to have uh high crashes. So looked at that as well, in combination with, as Allison mentioned, the public's feedback as well. Came up with a list of projects um that we feel pretty confident about. Um and we will, uh you know, we'd like to develop a grant application to uh try to fund these projects. And so um I'll kinda work on the north end of the, of the city here. Uh so one hundred ninety, one hundred ninety-first and Ridgeview um down to one hundred seventh and Ridgeview. We wanna kinda continue the um the the look and feel of that uh Ridgeview corridor, right? We have a, you have a roundabout at one hundred ninety-ninth and Ridgeview. Um so we will um uh from our study, we're seeing that there's a need for roundabouts at those locations as well to eliminate some of the crashes that you've um experienced there. Um and then, just kinda staying within the city limits here, um two hundred twenty-third and Victory was another uh area as well that we felt needed um either signal or roundabout. And so we are kinda finalizing that data right now, and I I believe it'll be one of those um either or, so. Um another area that uh we felt would be a great candidate for funding was was South Street as well. I know that can, that has been brought up several times um among the governing body. So uh we felt that that was a good one as well. Um and again, just, you know, adding um connectivity for pedestrians, adding sidewalk, curb and gutter, uh fixing some of the drainage in that area as well, so. Um and also on South Street, um two hundred fifteenth, I'll kinda move over to the, on the KDOT route. Allison mentioned, we talked to KDOT um earlier today about a few intersections along one sixty-nine. And the results of the study have shown that one sixty-nine is um, has a very um considerable crash history there. Um uh there's, there's a lot of crashes, a lot of fa, unfortunately, a lot of fatalities. Uh we felt that um is very important to act now, work with KDOT to implement some different, different things along one sixty-nine at several key intersections. One of them is two hundred fifteenth. The other is at two hundred seventh and uh Lone Elm. And so we're gonna be looking at kind of the intersection configurations there um to help people um move through those intersections uh better, so. Those are the the projects that we're thinking about funding.
Awesome. I think it's great day, data, and I would agree with every single one of those. I think those are some real high points and high, high traffic areas and where we have a lot of our crashes or a lot of our congestion. So I think you guys hit the nail on the head.
I was just gonna say on a personal note, um two hundred seventh and Ridgeview, uh my son about six years ago got in a major car accident there. And um he was turning onto Ridgeview, going to school. And the sun, I guess, there's, in the morning, when the sun that, he didn't, he just, right in front of a car that was going about forty-five or fifty-five miles an hour.
Wow.
So it was a major accident. He didn't get hurt, but the other person did. So that intersection right there, when you spoke about it, kinda.
Sure.
Yeah, so definitely think that one. And then I live around two twenty-third and Victory, and I've seen several wrecks there too. These are really good locations. I was just gonna commend you for that.
I actually, I'm actually got a question about the two hundred twenty-third and Victory, cause I I also live right down that way. And um putting a roundabout there is an interesting solution. Uh do we have the actual data on hand as to why we identified that particular intersection?
Yes, just based on the historical crashes, crash types.
Do you have numbers?
I.
Kind of inform us about?
Um I can follow up with that if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, cause like I've, I've got lots of feedback on multiple, on multiple of these locations. I understand that. The Victory and two hundred twenty-third one's one that I'm kinda confused about.
Okay.
Okay.
That's one that, my daughter had the same type of accident, two hundred twenty-third and Victory, it's the same problem with the sun coming down. I think people struggle there. But they lowered the the speed limit there, that helped quite a bit. But before, it used to be forty-five and that's.
Yeah, I'd just be interested, because I, this, this whole program's kind of new to me, so I don't, I haven't seen the data, I haven't seen the what, what numbers we've looked at and said, okay, this is why it's a problem. So I'd, I'd like to be read in on it.
Sure.
Um I was up in kinda Saint Joe Maryville area a couple of weeks ago, and one thing that they had, they have a very similar, it's a kinda one-sixty-nine highway. And one thing that I really liked out there, and I don't know if this is something you're looking at, but it's basically a left turn only from the actual highway and then only right turns onto the highway.
Right in, right out.
Yeah, I, to me, that seems like a much cheaper route to go than maybe doing full-on, like we're doing it like one hundred ninety-first and one hundred ninety-ninth. Is that something that you're looking at, or is that not really on the radar?
We are.
Okay, cause I thought, I, that was the first time I really saw. It was actually really cool.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about that before, at least I know Lane and I, and I think.
I just never pictured it, like when I saw it, I was like, oh yeah, this is way more.
Well, you eliminate that crossing or median, trying to go from one.
And I think now that we're getting some more, you know, controlled exits, now is probably the time to do it because they can go down and turn around or whatever pretty quickly. But I know that's people's main concern is, well, I don't have to go out of my way. I think we have plenty of access points now that, that would be a really nice thing to do on, especially two hundred fifteenth, two hundred seventh. I feel like those two are almost worse than. They don't have as much traffic as maybe one hundred ninety-first, but I feel like they're actually worse turns off of those side roads, so.
Well, and tho- those ones are difficult because.
The blind spot.
Yeah, you can't see the traffic, the traffic's going seventy miles an hour, and by the time you see it, I mean, but I mean, you can actually visualize it, they're right there.
So yeah, I thought that was a really cool concept, so I didn't know if that was something that we were, you were looking at for it.
Definitely is. And from a benefit cost perspective, I mean, it costs literally nothing and.
I was gonna say, you just put in.
Potentially saving lives, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is exactly the type of solutions that.
One, especially for a place like Lone Elm Street, where it's, it's not utilized a lot.
Yeah.
And there's literally another intersection, you know, very short distance right after that at two hundred seventh.
Really, both of those, two fifteenth, two hundred seventh, you have two great options, one hundred ninety-ninth and two hundred twenty-third. I mean, there's really no reason people need.
And Lone Elm seasonal too, with golf season.
Yeah, so.
So and most-
Those are options.
Yeah. The majority of people that are going into the golf play are coming from the north and turning right in there anyway. So it's probably really not going to affect them that much. Yeah. And, and going out, they can go down Lone Elm North. So they-
Yeah, 299, yeah.
Which they probably do anyways. They probably go north and get on 199, 199th anyways. Or at least I would if coming out of there.
I think all these spots are really good too. So I'm happy to see these are all being kind of. Now, I do have a question on that north one. How many corners of that is actually us? And how many corners is the county?
Yeah.
Good question.
Great question.
I think it's three and one, right?
Three and one.
Yeah.
Three, county, one us, or vice versa?
Other way around.
Other way around.
Okay. So we're, oh, we're only one, right? That's what I thought. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have, we talked to the county about this.
Which is the Wolf Creek side.
So we got the southwest corner and the county's got the rest of it?
Yeah, that's what I thought about it.
Right. So yeah, we did talk to the county about this. They were supportive.
Yeah. And I've personally seen several wrecks on that intersection I saw. I'm pretty sure it was probably a school, somebody coming from the high school because it was about 30 minutes after school let out. And there was somebody all went down, down in the ditch.
Well, it's funny, it's not even traffic related. Somebody hit a bus when they were coming home from basketball, remember?
Yep.
Somebody didn't go stop at the stop sign and just hit the bus coming through.
Yeah. So yeah, the only, the only one I'm a little surprised, if we zoom out a little bit there, the only one I'm a little surprised that's not on there is 223rd and Webster.
Oh, yeah.
Because to me, that's a pretty high traffic. And maybe, and I know we've talked about multiple different ideas on there, but I would have expected that one to be on there as well.
I don't think you'd want to even keep that open. I think-
Well, I know that's the talk over the years is talk about, you know, we've talked about realigning Webster, moving it. So maybe that's why it was not on there because we've talked about going a different route anyways. But that's definitely an intersection that's highly used and could definitely use some of, I know we're going to improve it some way, but yeah. Anyways, that, that was the only one that I was like, I'm surprised that's not on there.
I will, I will say that the study will have a whole list of projects. These are just a handful.
So how does the, the funding work? I mean, you're going to put a grant together for all of the projects or are you going to do it for certain ones? Or how does that work?
Right. So there's only, there's only two years left of the program. So we want to take advantage of this year and next year. And so we want to, I mean, do a handful of projects this year and probably handful of projects next year. And again, these were some of the projects that were, you know, kind of priority. And I have been talking to Infrastructure Hub too. I think we've talked about that before. Infrastructure Hub helps communities like Spring Hill with match money. They're also, they also just started a brand new program to help with grant writing services as well. They'll actually provide you funds to hire a consultant and write grant applications. So I've been talking with them about helping you all out too. So just-
So there's multiple projects here we can apply for?
And is there a limit on what we can apply for?
There, there are limits, yes. Yeah. We do want to be strategic, right? Make sure that we're addressing all the criteria that's in the federal grant, grant program, you know, making sure that the feds feel comfortable, right, with their investment, making sure that we do that. So, yeah. Definitely be other applications. And this isn't the only program either. I mean, we can, like Allison's done a great job of finding funds through KDOT. There's other funding mechanisms that we can use as well. So.
Well, I just want to say thanks to you and Allison and the whole team. I think this whole Safe Streets for All thing has been really big. It's been really well done. All the maps, all the interactive stuff has been really good, really high quality stuff. So props to all you guys for making all that happen.
Yeah. How many surveys did you receive thus far? I was just curious. I mean, I know I did mine, but you know.
Yeah, I had to get the exact numbers.
I would guess that it's up 200, but that's just a guess. Is it higher?
I'll say typically 200.
But it was good. Yeah, 200 is what we've kind of hit before. So if it's higher than that, that's good.
Yeah, we were pleasantly surprised by how many.
See the participation.
A little bit more hot topic item for most people.
Well, good. Yeah. Because I think the last time we did something similar, we got like 200 people. So yeah, if we got-
Well, for the comp plan, we were getting like 100 people.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I was like, so yeah, if we got more than that, that's awesome. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, we'll move on to announcements and reports. I don't really have any announcements. Just want to say I had the State of the City address this week. I think that went pretty well. I might got, might've got a little long-winded, but we had a lot of good things going on in Spring Hill over the last year and a lot of things to talk about. So I was excited about that. I, I did cut out a lot of my notes, so it could have been a lot longer. But it was fun to do and exciting to share with all the stakeholders and community members what, what we got going on and the things we're excited about. And I think we have a lot to be proud of as Spring Hill and then also as a governing body up here. So I think we've gotten a lot accomplished with the little that we're giving every year. Not little, we're giving a lot every year. But I think we've got a lot accomplished with the 18 cents per dollar that we get as a city. So yeah, I appreciate you guys attending and everything. So yeah. With that, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Young.
No report.
Mr. Thong.
Got nothing.
Mr. Peel.
No report.
Mrs. Feedback.
Yeah, I have one. I actually just came from a, a celebration of life service. We had a big pillar in our community. Alicia Vonstein passed away unexpectedly. She was a coach and a teacher to a lot of kids, to my children as well. And so if you could just keep family and friends and athletes and students and your thoughts, I think that would be good because she will be extremely missed. So I don't have any other announcements.
No questions for Lane?
Not this time.
All right. Wow.
He already answered him.
Good job, Lane.
Thanks.
Mr. Phil. Mr. Massey.
Nope.
Mr. Lao.
Four.
Captain Khan. Mr. Burton.
Nothing, sir.
Mrs. Abel. Madam Clerk.
No, thank you.
Mrs. Dunn.
No, thank you.
Mrs. Jones.
Jacob's going to get it.
Mrs. Jones. I know, I'm just kidding.
Sorry, smiling.
Mr. Spear.
Jacob's going to mess it up.
Never.
Oh, holy.
Wow. That might be a record.
That hadn't happened in years.
I know. Yeah. Oh, Mrs. Feedback does have more to add. I knew, I knew it couldn't go down like that.
Well, it's not a question. We had our work session. Rhonda, I just want to thank you for that. That was really informative and I appreciate that.
It was good.
Yeah.
It's good. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number one.
Do we need any kind of break? Are we going straight in?
It's draft night. Let's get it over.
All right. I move the city council recess into executive session for 10 minutes to receive advice to council regarding economic development pursuant to KSA 754319B2 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 8:20 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Lane Massey, City Administrator, and Spencer Lao, City Attorney.
Second. Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500. See you soon. You only got two tonight, guys.
Welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened an open meeting at 8:20 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into Executive Session Number Two.
I move the City Council recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA. Seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the City Council chambers at?
Eight forty-two.
Eight forty-two PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following. Spencer Lau, City Attorney.
Second.
Promotion to second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries five zero zero. See you soon. opposed. Motion carries 5-0-0. See you soon. Welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened an open meeting at 8:20 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0-0. Have a good night and go Chiefs.